First thing on is public comment, and I just pulled the sheet so I didn't see any. Second thing is moment of silence, I'd like all of you to keep Duane in your prayers, he lost his mother's and is not going to be here tonight. At this time we'll have Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
We have agenda and the motion, but we also have a...
I'll speak civil.
Yes?
Yeah, we have a couple of items. Under Roman numeral nine, Ms. Emerson is asked to speak to the board concerning safety measures to consider at athletic events. So that is a non-action item, it'll be Roman numeral nine. And then Roman numeral ten G, we're going to ask you to approve an amended contract with our ARPTAC. G was sent to you today, so it should be already on your digital board agenda, but it's not on the written board agenda.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as change?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the items A and B.
What motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Through the minutes for the August 4th meeting, did any changes? Any motion?
I'll make a motion with thirty minutes for August 4th meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'm second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Next item. Special recognition Employee of the Month, Ms. Gibson to do this.
It is with great pride that we recognize Jana Willis as Sycamore County Schools' Employee of the Month. Jana has led East Kipling Middle School with strength, vision, and perseverance, guiding the school through its ATSI designation, and turning challenges into opportunities for growth. Through her leadership, she has surrounded her staff with a team committed to excellence and united under the banner of Eagle Pride. Her ability to inspire others, to foster collaboration, and hold high expectations has created an environment where both students and staff thrive. Jana models what it means to lead with integrity, courage, and dedication, ensuring that the success of East Sycamore Middle School is shared by the entire community. We celebrate Jana not only for her accomplishments, but also for the culture of pride, resilience, and hope she has built. Her leadership is making a lasting difference, and we are grateful for her service to Sycamore County Schools. Congratulations, Jana, your commitment and passion prove.
Next thing on our item is consent agenda items, is there any questions about those? Not in motion to approve?
No. Go ahead. I'll make a motion with a request to consent agenda items. I'll second.
A motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Nothing carries? Information aboard actions. Plans, director of schools.
Yeah, items A and B prompted us to ask the board if we could have a working session. Item A is the board strategic plan, we're supposed to visit every two years. We're a little delinquent in visiting the... But we need to have opportunities to meet with the board and let the board direct us to what they think the strategic plan will be. And then part B of that, Mr. Melkins?
Yeah, as you know, we've presented some information back in the spring about the OPEB and changes possibly that the board might consider to our OPEB plan for our retirees. There's enough nuances in that, that, and enough different directions that you may want to go, but I think if we just did it in a board meeting, it'd be hard to provide the information adequately for discussion, and it would help in a work session or a little bit more laid back on things if we could do that and get that decision done, and then present what you want at a board meeting for approval.
And we're also hoping that this is the last time that the board will ever have to, ever have to visit OPEB. So both of those are, the strategic plan policy requires your input, it is your strategic plan, but OPEB, we need your input on where to draw the lines as far as what opportunities retirees can receive. So during this time of year, we don't think Saturday would be a good day for a working session, because a lot of people watch football on Saturday. So we're hoping to pick out, we're hoping to pick out a, several dates and email them to you, we have two members absent tonight, and you can let us know your availability, and we'll do it one evening, six p.m., and try to get it done.
What's going on with everybody in September?
Yes. Yes, in September.
Yeah, when you do, yeah. That was ready by October, has been the one number one?
Yes, and our October board meeting is on October 20, and so I think we need to have that meeting so we can present something to the board for approval on October 20.
C?
Yes.
Financial donation from Apex Bank.
Yeah, East Sycamore High School wishes to move their financial accounts to Apex Bank. Apex Bank has incentivized that. And the incentive, you have a copy of the incentives in your packet, and it's going to equate to about $9,000, $8,980. Over a five-year agreement will be $42,900. East Sycamore High School is the only school in the east that does not have their financial accounts with Apex Bank. So we're, policy says, this is a donation. So policy says I have to make you aware of the donation. The bank that currently has the accounts for East Sycamore High School was giving the opportunity to provide incentives, and they said that was not part of their process. So I'm making you aware that Apex Bank is making a donation to East Sycamore High School.
So this is everybody to high school and the things. We're ready to go with that. We don't need our approval.
No, it's just a donation that requires a board...
We appreciate it.
Yeah, we do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But I look to over this, and it's going to be good. All right. Review board policy, 1.806.
Yeah, board policy 1.806 deals with advertising and distribution of materials in the schools, and it deals with, it deals with polit- poll elections. East Sycamore High School is a polling place. It is our only school that is used as a polling place. It's going to be used twice between now and November, in the primary and in the general. Our board policy currently says, "Political signs for people who are running for public office shall not be allowed on school property except those being held by poll workers on election day." People campaigning can't hold a sign. Now, what we learned last time when we had a election is that there is a wide swath of state right-of-way. It comes onto the campus of East Sycamore High School. I would venture to say sixty, seventy feet, and that's where we put signs last time. I also have relearned a little since the last time we had the election. I did not know this. There's a federal law called the Hatch Act. The Hatch Act keeps people from, that are working for the federal government to use their office for political reasons. Tennessee has a little Hatch Act. And if you're a state employee, which I think teachers are state employees, I think members of the House of Representatives are state employees, they are forbidden from putting signs on campus. And we have four teachers who are elected to the county commission, and we have a current member of the House of Representatives running for Congress. So we could get in a weird situation that this law prevents them from putting, if we permitted signs, could prevent them from putting the signs, but other candidates who are not state employees could put signs. So as we approach this election season, we're just going to follow our policy and ask that all signs at East Sycamore High School be put in the state right-of-way. And I just wanted to talk about that publicly and make the board aware of that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. District enrollment?
Yeah, we are down forty-six students today. And we received seven thousand two hundred, forty-six students is district-wide. We received $7,295 per student. So that will be a $335,000 impact when we get to our next TESA allocation next spring.
What's your enrollment right now? Can you give me off your head?
I have it here, I think.
I thought we kept starting with school, but we're kind of up ahead.
We are in some places and we're behind in others. I thought I had, I've done, oh, yeah. I think it's twenty-seven eighty-six. That's, but let me make sure, twenty-seven eighty-six. And then this time last year, we were at like twenty-eight thirty-two or something like that.
Thank you all for letting me take up a little bit of your time tonight. I am representing some other administrators who have talked about this and definitely SROs that feel like this is important. So again, thanks for your time. I am standing here tonight to encourage you to create and adopt a clear bag policy for school spots or sporting events and large gatherings. Families in our community expect us to do everything possible to keep their children safe by adopting a clear bag policy. We join other universities, professional organizations, and nationwide organizations that have also adopted such a program. Any NFL game you go to, college football game or sporting event, concert, even the Brandell Opry, if you go there, you have to have a clear bag. And so you may or may not be aware that recently, on August 22nd, there was a high school shooting at a football game in Maple Kentucky. It's just two hours north of the road. A fourteen-year-old shot an eighteen-year-old in the fourth quarter of a football game, which is terrifying as an administrator and someone who's there at every football game. In Waverly on the same night, there was a scare forty-five minutes down the road. It was reported that there was a gun on campus at the football game. They evacuated, shut the football game down. Come to find out, it was a gun, but it was an airsoft gun. It looked like a handgun, but it was a pistol that was an airsoft gun. Still treated just like it was a real handgun. But it was a pistol that was an airsoft gun, still treated just like it was a, a real handgun. And from that, Humphreys County has also adopted immediately, that next week, they adopted a clear bag policy for all of their sporting events and large gatherings. So, I don't want to live in fear, I don't think that we should jump on a bandwagon, but I don't think this is a bandwagon. Eighty percent of schools, according to the U.S. Department of Education, have a policy like this. They have some form of controlled access or screening event for people that are entering their gates through large gatherings and/or sporting events. So, it's not really a matter of if it's gonna happen, it's when. And it's unfortunate that this is the situation that we live in. But I think that we owe it to our community. I think we owe it to our students and our faculty and our visiting team who are used to that at their homes. When they have us to their places to play sports, that we offer the same level of security. I've given you there an example of a proposed program, if you will. Obviously, this is up to you guys, this is, would be your policy to create. I have studied quite lengthy, I've spent a lot of time looking at different, even different states, not just in Tennessee. I've looked at Georgia, I've looked at Florida, I've looked at Kentucky, and I've looked at surrounding counties here in Tennessee. And this is kind of the best case scenario if I were to pick and choose what they use. Some are more strict, some are more lenient, but this is kind of a middle ground. So, it's low-cost, it's simple. We would, we have two entrances at, for example, at Hickman County High School's football games. We would have an SRO at every entrance. I'm not asking my staff to execute this. I'm asking them to be there to say we have a clear bag policy. If someone refuses to adhere to that, the SRO would step in. It is not my staff's responsibility to run safety. They're there to get, to get safety money. It is the SRO's responsibility to provide safety. And I would make that very clear upfront. So, do Z Y have any questions?
The only drawback, I've been to these things, AAU and other sports. But a lot of times, you don't know until you get there. So, this needs to be made aware to the public.
I agree.
Before you get a game of, and everybody's lined up mad.
Right.
And we don't want that to happen.
Absolutely.
And so, I don't know how many weeks it's gonna take to get this information out.
Sure.
Is everybody that's got athletics on board for this? Sure, asked to use both middle schools?
The ones that I have talked to, I think there's some difference of opinion between when we would start something like this. I've not taken a poll, I'll be honest with you. The middle school and I are all the same, that too comes to my school. I think you would have to blast, you would have to do a social media blast, you would have to do all calls, you would have to put it in the paper, you would have to do letters home. You would have to do a very good job of letting people know about this information. Because the last thing you want to do, Mr. Hobbs, is upset people. Because then you're asking for more of a problem.
They're not allowed, maybe they're gonna bother people to get it.
So then, but then you're, you're gonna create people being hostile, which is what you're trying to prevent. So, I think we have to do it the right way.
Right, exactly.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything to SBU?
I don't know that I'm aware of, like, a requirement there, but I can, I'll be able to check on it.
Or see if they have anything to prepare.
Yeah, this summer, I can't think of the guy's name. There's a guy, he's like a TV personality in Nashville, but he, oh, he, was it, remember who it was? Uh, anyway, he brought this gentleman here, and the gentleman has a device. And I saw on the news, I believe it, I believe it was Rutherford County purchased these. And you walk through it, and the device, it is metal detector, but it wouldn't detect this pin. But it would tech, it would detect a weapon. And so, I saw, when I see the news, I think it was in Rutherford County, open.
I think it was.
First, first time, and it was the exact same device that the gentleman brought here and displayed. It's portable, you can move it from your football field to your basketball gate, to, you could put it at the entrance of the school one day if you wanted to. And I believe it was eighteen thousand dollars. But what they were, what they were proposing is us use some of our safety money to, to purchase that device. So, it's something worth considering for the district because that way, it doesn't matter what kind of bag a person would have. I, I understand what you're trying to do, you're trying to have safe events. But if that device would detect a weapon, and supposedly it would detect a knife or a firearm with very, very great accuracy, then the SRO would have a hand line in the device. I, I saw it on the news, they were just coming, they were coming through the gate in Rutherford County, they bought them for all their schools. So, it's just a thought, I wish I could think of the gentleman's name, I have his name downstairs. But, thank you, Ms. Emerson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, I have to provide Board Action trip requests. East Hickman High School National Conference, two in general. Two school-born alumni here.
So, we're asking to go to the National Conference for Journalism and Education Association. It will, we will stay at the Gaylord Opry, Opryland Hotel. We will not stay there, it will move to different locations throughout Nashville. And like, this is a good opportunity because the conference moves around, I think.
Okay.
Uh, yes, so this year it's in Nashville. So, this is a wonderful opportunity because the National Conference does move around, so it's not always in Nashville.
Yeah, and four of us will go with Miss Grace, that's Chevron, and we're hoping to use the band, the school band.
Part of the cost to go to this will include a sub for Miss Grace for two days, which will cost $162. Hotel rooms for three rooms, three nights, and that'll be $2,520. The conference registration for five dollars, for five people, will be $675. Gas to and from Nashville will be $40. And food, six, at six dollars a day, for four students will be $240.
Okay, the total will be $3,637, but we are all gonna come up with our own money by doing fundraisers.
There is also a grant that they can apply for if they need assistance with their registration fee.
So, y'all are hopeful that you'll have everyone wiped out, right? All right, any motion to approve it?
My commission, then we approve the trip request to the National Conference for Students.
Motion second, all in favor say aye. All good?
Aye, thank you.
Next we have, Hickman High School JRTC Raider Competition. You want to combine both of these?
Yes.
Good evening, school board members, I am Deputy Tech Colonel Renzo RC.
I am Deputy Captain Gage Duke. And we are requesting permission to attend two Raider competitions for the Bulldog Italian Raider Team. And one of the competitions we will be attending is the Trojan Raider Competition in Glasgow, Kentucky. At Baron High School, Saturday, September 27th, 2025.
The second competition we'll be requesting, Division Four will be the Upper Grade Wilderness Competition. It'll be held during the time of October 23rd to the 26th, which is a Thursday and a Sunday, which we have also held in Fort Knox, Kentucky, which is also a open-air state where the barracks will be.
Y'all been on this trip before?
Yes.
Question, yeah, if I...
Yes.
So, this is something you don't look forward to every year. I know everything financial is taken care of, Chevron, and all this, like... So, we need a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve both JRTC trips.
They're pushing to approve both of these trips, just a second.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye. Any ideas? Good, thank you, y'all have a good trip.
Thanks so much.
You do well.
Thank you.
Excuse me, one more thing. Uh, we put in a trip, not trip request, field trip request for their Brigade National Trip we got coming up in October. We would like to go up the weekend before. One, it serves two purposes. One, we will go over the course with the kids, so they understand what they're getting into before we actually get to the competition the next week. Two, it's kind of like a staff ride, we're gonna take them around to a couple museums on the installation, go through a little history, and do a ride back the same weekend.
Say aye.
Say aye.
So, it'll be one trip, one-day trip down and back.
Anybody have a problem, discussion? Motion to approve trip.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, what, a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, y'all have a good trip.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
East Hickman High School's Future Bets United.
My name's Anna Claire.
My name's Avery Henry.
And mine's Annalee Hassan, and we are presenting a proposal of an East Hickman Pre-Bed Club, which would be named Future Bets United. One of the purposes of Future Bets United club at East Hickman High is to prepare and compete in a CPE Day, CTE Day at East Hickman, or Hickman County, as well as compete in an online veterinary medicine competition sponsored by Texas A&amp;M. Tests may be composed of multiple choice questions, math questions, picture identification, and team activities. Another purpose is to address the growing interest of animal care and future careers. Vet medicine jobs are growing, a nineteen, nineteen percent growth just in this area is expected by 2031. This club would allow students to explore different career paths in animal care. Okay, to go on with what she said, it would provide students with the access to get involved in the community with community service, along with critical resources for when applying to college and overall strengthening our, our resumes for even part-time jobs and internships. Another purpose is to use students the opportunity to have leadership skills and develop better communication skills, which helps with all future careers. Okay, this club would also have an additional educational value, hands-on learning experience, strengthening our critical thinking skills, and promoting teamwork. You may be wondering, how can Future Bets United benefit in East Hickman? Well, it would help build our school's reputation for supporting student interests, which would increase student engagement as well. The FBU club provides students who prefer the animal side of FFA, which, with a unique opportunity to zero in on topics of interest. But students in this club would also be joining FFA. And then, the startup cost of this club would be none, and we would meet monthly during club time, and if needed, we will plan and complete fundraisers. Our club sponsor would be Ms. Polk, because she would be a great fit. She teaches animal science and veterinary science classes at East Hickman High. She also has contacts with speakers and college advice. She loves animals and her students. She's well-known for, among students for advice in various fields and offers assistance with students who are seeking college or falling behind. We already have fifteen students interested in joining, and going back to what she said earlier about the competitions, we have six students expressed interest in doing it. With approval for this club, we will begin promoting it further and inviting more students to join. The vet club will mostly be student-run to help students gain leadership skills and also help our sponsor out with responsibilities. Our goal is to make this opportunity open and welcoming to everyone, no one will be excluded. At this time, is there any questions we have not answered?
We have fifteen members, is there any other schools in around counties have this, you don't know?
We don't think so, but Ms. Polk plans on, like, having us compete against each other.
In the school?
In the CTE Day.
Okay.
I think Sanofi has a, has, has this club, is that right?
Dixon.
Dixon, Dixon has the club.
Oh, good, good. I think it's y'all on the right track. Back when I was growing up, on the beach, you went to the lips, take your pig or a cow. And they'd go a little bit, everybody's got a dog, a cat on their arm, and you gotta wait three weeks to get in. There's definitely a shortage of vets. And I think it's good to get young started and get the vets, and we have some great vet schools, and things like that. All righty.
I don't know if this is, I don't know if I'm premature in announcing this, I hope not. Mr. Turpin has procured a grant that is gonna allow Ms. Polk's class to have the capacity to have a horse be on campus and, and for, for the class. So, through Mr. Turpin's effort, we're gonna get some additional infrastructure to support the veterinary program, which will support the club.
Any questions? Sounds like an interesting problem.
I'll make a motion to approve the Future Bets United club.
Have a motion, do we have a second? Second, all in favor say aye. Good, thank you.
Thanks so much for your time.
Looking forward to this.
Me too.
Who's gonna start this year? Gonna start this year?
Yes, we're planning on starting after the first quarter.
Okay.
So, like, after fall. And the competition sponsored by Texas A&amp;M will happen in spring.
Great, we'll look forward. All right, probably our architecture was contract for the roof. East Hickman High School.
Yeah, the gym specifically. The, the roof on the gym is still under warranty, but the roof on the gym, it has leaks sporadically. I'd like to thank our maintenance employee, Toby Warren, he went Saturday morning, we had, we got a three-and-a-half-inch rain in that part of the county on Friday night. And we had no leaks, but we previously had a leak that damaged the floor. That's probably a, at least a $175,000 gym floor that, and I'm basing that on Hickman County Middle was like a $115,000, a $115,000, it's a lot bigger than East Hickman High School. So, we would like to approve a contract with KBJM. They are our architect firms that have worked with us with roofs in the past and start the process of getting together the bid materials. We were hoping to make it through the year with the roof, but we can't take that chance. So, this, this, this is gonna require bidding, and at some point, this will require a budget of that.
So, when are they gonna, if they get start, get the contract, when are they gonna start on this, pretty quick?
Immediately.
Immediately.
Yes.
So, we're looking at what kind of timeline?
It'll take a month to get the bids together. Hopefully, hopefully, we might could approve bids on October 20th. That, I mean, but that would, that would be a whole, no later than November.
This is the twenty-year roof, and we're right at twenty years.
Yes.
So, it's sooner or later?
Yes.
I've been out there on a... I've been out there on a, been mopping the floor, so. Do we have a motion to approve the contract for the roof?
I'll make a motion to approve the architect contract for Hickman High. Or East Hickman.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call votes and system deal money?
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Hobs?
Yes.
Ms. Sains?
Yes.
Ms. Aaron?
Yes.
Hickman County High School Classroom renovation change order. Mr. Moos?
There was a change order for about $900 that they asked for. They thought they were going to be able to reuse some, some parts of the cabinetry to kind of make a softet around some exhaust vents, but after tearing it up, they, I guess they tore up too much of it or, or something, but they're not able to reuse it like they thought they would be able to, so they're having to create a softet.
Right, in the classroom?
Yes, in the, yes, in the consumer science classroom. So they're just, they're really just building pretty boxes around the exhaust fans for the cooking stations.
This is a $900?
Yes, about $300 per station.
I'll make a motion to approve the renovation change order for the consumer science classroom.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, roll call vote.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Hobs?
Yes.
Ms. Sains?
Yes.
Ms. Aaron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mills.
Budget amendments.
In your packet, there is Budget Amendment 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 was added today. Budget Amendment 10 and 11 are for our federal programs. Fund 142 is dealing with the carryover dollars to our consolidated budget, which Budget Amendment 10 will include Title I, Title II, Title IV, and Title V. When we do that submission in the spring, we know that there's not enough funds to fund everything at the time, but we know that we'll have carryover dollars, and we will put in that submission, any plan, the areas that we're going to add those carryover dollars to. So that is just doing that in this case. Budget Amendment 11 is also part of that. It is dealing with our IDEA Part B in our IDEA preschool, and it is budgeting those carryover dollars. I do want to bring one thing up. In our discussions during the summer with the state in relation to the IDEA, there are certain dollars that are appropriated in there. For instance, in responsibilities that we have to serve private schools. And so we have to, even though that's not necessarily a big expense to us, we do have to allocate those, and we have to allocate those by responsibility. So what you will see in this budget amendment, along with one of the 141 budget amendments, is we are going to request to move, and this is per discussions with the state, that they requested us do this, one of our SLP positions being paid out of the 142 IDEA 901 account, and moving an OT position that has been paid out of there for the past few years into 141. It's a wash. It's basically the same amount, but it allows those dollars that are being allocated by the Fed specifically for private school responsibilities to be tied to those SLP services that are provided through our school system. But again, it's also the carryover dollars that is being budgeted in there. Budget Amendment number 12 is a private donation and from a family, and that will be dispersed out to certain schools in the way that they have requested. Budget Amendment 13 is what I just discussed in relation to the moving of the speech pathologists and the occupational therapist positions and dollars in relation to those, and just highlighting that position, the OT position in our 141 budget. Budget Amendment 14 is dealing with the situation that we started at the beginning of the school year with Hickman County High School and the mold. We had about $90,000 that we originally budgeted in our capital projects that we were able to do at the very end of the school year last year with $20, $25. So this is moving some of those dollars in to cover those expenditures that were not originally budgeted for.
A leak was a big expense?
Oh, yeah, it was. It, it wasn't a leak, it was the
The unit went out?
Yes, the freon leaked out and during, during dead week, when there's not a lot of activity in the building, and so we blew 95 degree air with 70% humidity into that building, because the unit was still running, but the freon leaked out.
Was there any warranty on that unit?
No. It was not, but the good news is an environmental engineer was here last week or week before last, was it? It was week before last. And tested the room, and the room is healthy, and so we hope that we turn the corner on all that.
Do we have a motion to approve budgets, all together?
I'll make a motion to approve Budget Amendment 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Hobs?
Yes.
Ms. Sains?
Yes.
Ms. Aaron?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
I'll vote.
I found this on the web.
Thank you.
And then we have G, the one we added to, I'm sorry.
You want me to sit back down?
No, I'm sorry, no, you're doing right, I'm wrong. I apologize.
I can do whatever.
I'm used to, I'm used to politicking the last, but go ahead.
Me too.
I apologize.
You're just fine. So up for first reading tonight is Attendance Policy 6.200. I talked to Dr. Dunlap, who's over attendance now, and he wanted to make some recommendations after working with his team to Tier 1 and Tier 2. What is located as Tier 2 actions are listed as Tier 1 actions. And so he's made a recommendation to move those to Tier 2, and then he's put some new language in there for Tier 1. And so this was in your packet. Things that were struck through either need to come out of the policy or they will move to another area of the policy. And then the highlighted area is the, are the additions to the policy. If you have questions, he is here tonight, and we'll be happy to answer your questions if they have.
Any questions?
I will say, first of all, I was going to introduce Dr. Dunlap later. This is Dr. Mark Dunlap. Mark, raise your hand, please. He's taking Ms. Malugia's place as the person who's charged of many things, but safety and attendance are two of those things. And what he's doing with this policy is more closely aligning our policy with TSBA recommendation. And he's also giving the principal an opportunity to not be involved at the very immediate point of truancy, to free them up for instructional duties, free them up for more serious infractions. But then when it gets to Tier 2, the principal will be involved. Our current policy requires the principal to be in Tier 1 meetings. So we're continuing to try to improve our attendance, and this is just an effort to work on that.
And if you so choose, however you decide to own this, you can waive the second rating, so this can, you know, be effective quicker.
Immediately? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve policy? Change, all this, actually.
I'll make a motion to approve Policy 6.200 as presented.
Second. I'll second. All favor? Aye.
Aye.
You both? That's my vote.
Thank you.
Okay, and we just have a few up for review tonight from 6.4081 to 6.503.
Mr. Hobs, did y'all wait? Did you do the recommendation of what Ms. Chilton said about waiting a second? So that, okay. I just want to make sure I had it right. Thank you.
And so we have a few up for review tonight. And next month, we will finish another two-year review, so we will start over again in November. And so, but tonight, we have 6.4081 to 6.503.
Second. All right.
Any questions?
Any questions on this? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept Policies 6.4081 to 6.503.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's not open.
Thank you.
Now, Chief. Now, Chief.
We had a request from the architect for the consumer science classroom and the East CTE building. Upon getting ready to build, they discovered that they had put in the wrong amount for the CTE renovation cost. They put it, they had it on the contract that was approved in February, it's $8,500. And they are requesting that it, that we pay them $18,211.25, which is the amount that they had informed Mr. Chilton of back in November. So between the time, between November and February, somebody had put in a wrong amount on that, on that part of the project.
Yeah, they made a $10,000 error.
That's a, that was a motion?
They made a $10,000 error to our credit. They had, well, Mr. Chilton was still the director. They sent him correct amount, well, in the contract they sent us, they cheated themselves out of $10,000. So they sent us a nice letter saying that they hope the board will honor their original email to Mr. Chilton, which is what we think we should do. They get a, they get a rate, 8.75, what is it?
Eight point five seven?
Eight point five seven percent for their work. And the, and the CTE, the consumer science classroom is about a $170,000 project. So that $18,000 is the right amount that we owe them.
And we had the money.
And we
Yes, and the money, the money came to us through a grant.
Yeah. It was, it's part of the ISAM grant, and it was, we had plenty, we had plenty in that one.
Yes.
So I guess we better give them the money. Make a motion to approve the $10,000 odd dollars.
Amendment.
Amendment. Any questions? Need a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Ms. Sains?
Yes.
Ms. Aaron?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Hobs?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Mills.
I'll be glad to get that. All right, as always in September, we have our Board Election Officer. This year was put off until the, I like this at the end. I think that's where we ought to keep it.
It was Mr. Lane's idea, because the chairman who is in helped prepare for the meeting, so he, Ms. Lane said let them run the meeting, so I like the change to myself.
So at this time, we'd like to open up the election for the 2025, 2026 election for Board Officers. This time, motion's open up for Chairman of the Board. Do we have any nominations?
I'll make a motion for Tim Hobbs as Chair.
Do we have any other nominations? Those nominations, motion. Now you can close nominations.
I'll make a motion to close nominations.
Second. Got a second for that motion?
I'm sorry.
A second to close, she, Ms. Taylor made a motion to close nominations.
I'll second that.
All right. This time, an election for Tim Hobbs for Chairman. All favor say aye.
Aye.
You have a roll call vote?
Vote.
Well, let's just have a roll call vote on this, make sure everybody's, I guess all at once, I guess that's it. We'll need a roll call vote. All right, Vice Chair. This is in case, this is what I've been doing, this is what I'm up here tonight. Any nomination for Vice Chair?
I'll nominate Doug Lane as Vice Chair.
I'll second that.
We have a second then. All right, any others? Mr. Lane, you're it. Pro turn. This is the person who, in case the Chair, Vice Chair is out, will take over the meeting. And so far, since I've been over, we never had to use this, but it's still a position we have to nominate for. So this time, floor is open for nominations.
I'll nominate Jane.
Any other nominations? Motion made to nominate Jane? Second, Jane, you're ready. Legislature representative. This is one that deals with our legislature representative. And we've done, here for years, been doing this, so you can name anybody you want to, to do this. So motions, nominations open.
I'll nominate Kristi.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations, it's Kristi. Thank you. And student representative mentors assigned by Chair, Emily DePune-Neumans. And one from East and one from Hickman, if you would introduce yourself.
Hi, my name's Emily Keen. I go to East Hickman.
And you?
My name is Kitty Bates, and I go to Hickman County.
All right, glad to have you on.
Oh, junior, should I? I'm a senior, so.
I'm a sophomore.
Very well. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Sit here. Each time, any other announcements?
You want to sign a mentor?
Yes. That's something to do that. Ms. Baker's been a mentor for the last few years, you want to continue doing that? All right, Ms. Baker. Announcements. We have the meeting, it's October 20th, and it will be to Hickman County High School. So you've got to remember that. Any other announcements? It's a quiet bunch tonight.
I don't have an announcement, but I want to thank the Central Office for the setup at the forum we had the other night. They did a really, really good job with the food and everything.
Yes. It was very, very nicely done.
Yes.
This was, Ms. Baldwin, Ms. Baldwin?
Ms. Davy and Ms. Man.
Yes. I want to thank them, because I saw pictures of it, but I wasn't here, but the first one I missed in years. But understanding it well, we're real well, and a lot of good pictures. And thanks to everybody for coming and representing us, and the students who worked it, and the volunteers who worked it. It made us feel good to have this, present this to the TSBA.
Can I ask them to give a little something about their school?
Okay.
You want to go?
I'll go. We are bringing back a lot of new things this year. We brought back the Scarlet Regiment and the Color Guard. I'll go. Um, we are bringing back a lot of new things this year. We brought back the Scarlet Regiment and the Color Guard. They played two weeks ago at our first home game. We are planning to go to Beta Club convention for the first time in a while. We have our fall sports. They also gonna be doing well. Football, volleyball, cross-country, golf, girls soccer. And I think National Art Honor Society is coming back and that's exciting, so looking to have a great year.
That's exciting.
Period, Dan.
Yes.
Um, I think right now East Hickman is really moving towards bringing back school spirit and trying to up the people to stay in school. So I know a lot of seniors are moving towards bringing back senior traditions and we're looking forward to homecoming and bringing in more school spirit. And I know that fall sports are starting off in a great way and we've seen a lot more attendance and I'm looking forward to the rest of the year to see how they decline.
And it's homecoming this week at East Hickman High School?
Yes, sir. Homecoming's next week. Yes.
Same for us, too.
Alright.
We have our first homecoming dance, which I've been begging for freshman year, so I'm very excited. So excited.
Any other announcements?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate um, Hickman County High School volleyball teacher Logan Campbell who won the Tennessee novice teacher of the year. It's a great honor for Logan. And then Bennett's Blessings, which is a uh, organization that, that is very generous with us. They're, they're having Bennett's Bolt, which is a one K walk or a five K run. Or you can go talk, visit with people, which will be my plan. That will be this Saturday at eight o'clock. And uh, so I hope that, I hope that our community will support that. I hope our school district will support that. Uh, Rebecca Tyler have given, since I've been here, over twelve thousand dollars and they've given that money equally to all schools in honoring memory of their son Bennett, uh, who sadly perished due to strep and uh, when he was four years old. And, and they have turned such a tragedy into such a blessing. And, and we take that money, uh, last week, I called and asked for an administrator and they said that she ran to the store real quick to buy a child a pair of shoes and that money, Bennett's Blessing money is used for purposes like that. Uh, last year, we got a child, helped a child's family get their internet turned back on so the child could uh, do an online class to finish school. So it's, it's, it's a real generous organization. They've been good to us, so we're hoping that people will come. If, if you're a student school or member, you're expected to do the five K this Saturday.
I got college football.
No games on, it ain't a party.
I know we got several out here that they love, didn't we? Any others? Any member? Any announcements from any member? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
On Thursday, aye.
Aye.
Thank you for attending.
Thank y'all.